Okay, anytime we're ready.
Okay, could we please have everyone rise for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No.
We, as a note, Sue Fries is absent tonight. So we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Barb, second by Brad. All in favor?
I.
I saw just, I didn't see Karen, did Karen say?
Yes, thumbs up.
Okay. I don't have them on my screen. To change it, so all in favor, motion carried. Next, we need to go into our retreat.
Correct. So our first item on the retreat is right here to the right, approve the agenda. So Karen McGara is up for our retreat, so I'm going to turn over control of the screen and the audio to Karen.
Alright, so you can see my screen, can everybody hear me, head shake?
Yes.
Alright, beautiful.
Sorry, may I interrupt? Do you want me to stay or do you want me to leave at this point?
Jen, I don't think you need to stay, we'll be here for a while and then I'll just do the exit information.
Okay, thank you, everyone, have a good night.
You too.
Alright, so, um, tonight, we're going to talk about a couple of different things, district reserves and fund balance and future plans and all that good stuff. So anybody that's, um, was on the board in 2019, the slides will look familiar, but some of the numbers have changed to protect the innocent. But, um, our reserves, our funds provide, basically, it's a savings account. When you have a reserve, you set aside money for a specific purpose. Some of them have to be approved by the voters, some of them can just be approved by the board. So in reviewing everything, this is what we have as far as restricted reserve funds, workers' comp, unemployment, ERS, TRS, EBLR, capital reserve, repair reserve, and then we have four commitment funds of OPAP, tech, capital outlay and equipment replacement, we have assigned fund balance and unrestricted fund balance. So in going through each one of those, workers' comp reserved is reserved for that specifically to pay or to assist in payment of our workers' comp costs. So the amount in the reserve as of 63021 is 283,581. Our current actuarial balance of workers' comp claims is $213,000. So we are adequately funded for workers' comp. Each year, we add 1% of the change in fund balance to it, and each year, we use 25% of the actual workers' compensation billing to use the reserve fund. So every year, we use money and we put money back in depending on what our reserve fund policy indicates. So the second one is unemployment and maximum balance permitted is 100,000. And if you look, you see our 2021 balance was 661,000. This was extremely overfunded and the last time the state came in to audit, we kind of got our hands slapped for being completely overfunded in this. So we haven't added any money to it in a while. And actually, I didn't use any money last year because with COVID, there was all kinds of state and federal reimbursement for unemployment. And we are awaiting a $56,000 credit from the state. So I did not put any money in there and I did not take any out. So that is unemployment. Next up is employees' retirement reserve, this is for a non-certified staff. Again, our current balance is 1.2 million dollars and funding to cover three years of expenses is approximately 1.2 million. So again, as with workers' comp, this reserve fund is adequately funded. This one gets increased by 2% of the change in fund balance and each year, we use 50% of the annual ERS costs for this reserve. The next one is a pretty new one, it's only a couple of years old, is teachers' retirement, and this is for all of the certified staff. So instructional administrative staff. So each year, we are funding it and the maximum that we can fund it with is 2% of the annual total salaries of certified employees. So right now, the maximum balance that we can carry on it is 10% of the actual certified employee salaries. So currently, we would be able to have a maximum balance in this of 1.4 million dollars. And our current balance is 1,32,144. So next year, we'll be able to fund it with the 2%, but then we'll also be able to utilize part of it. When we originally set this up, we held it to, we would not use it until it was fully funded for a couple of reasons. One is, and the primary reason is because we needed to get rid of some of our unassigned fund balance. So this was a good place for it since they finally allowed us to have this reserve. So this will help in paying teachers' retirement costs going forward. Next up is employee benefit accrued liability, or more popularly known as EBLR. And what this one is, is for anybody who retires and has unused sick-in vacation that can be paid out according to their contract or the union contract. This covers that funding or covers that cost. So we use 1% of the annual change in fund balance each year. And each year, we pull the amount of the actual costs out of it. All of the contracts currently that have payments out are on a three-year basis. So if somebody has, say, for example, a teacher has a maximum 200 days that they can have in their contract, it's lower, $21,000, if I remember correctly, that they can get in a year. And that is split over three years, so we pay it over three years. So every year, we have, you know, different individuals that are being paid for, that we pay to a 403B for them based on their union contract. So right now, the current liability is 2.1 million dollars and our current balance is 1.1 million. So this one will continue to get funded until we reach that total liability and then we won't be able to fund it anymore. Next one up is capital reserve, which really we don't have right now because it was approved to be utilized in 2018 for the vote. So, and you can see at the bottom, I'm recommending that we go forward with, with creating another one. On here, it says 10 million, I was speaking with Mark and Bob and Kristen earlier and I said 20 million. So, you know, it's really up to you guys how much you want to put away for future projects. And it needs voter approval to create the fund, to fund the fund and then to use the funds. And the use of it would be to transfer it to the capital, to the capital fund, from the capital reserve fund in order to actually expend it on a project.
Karen, can I jump in here for a second?
No, sure.
Just to clear, thank you. Um, perseverance, I'm not going to give up. Just to clarify that, just like what Karen said with the other reserves, we're not going to take or we don't anticipate taking 20 million dollars in the next six months or nine months and plunking it all down into this reserve account. This is something that will grow over time as our finances dictate. And I just don't want anybody thinking that we're going to put 20 million dollars away in one single year. If we do get to that point, that'll be a separate conversation based on the finances as we move forward into the school year. And with capital reserve accounts like this, it is often a point of confusion for the community that they think it's fully funded it, whatever the allocation is. When we did it in 2012, that reserve account was only 2 million dollars. So as we're getting into bigger projects, it does make sense for that reserve account to be a little bit more robust and it will take some time, probably not as long as other districts to get to that point, but I just wanted to clarify that. Thanks Karen, back to you.
Yep, thank you. Uh, next one up is the repair reserve. And this was funded at the same time that the former capital one was. It's funded with 1.5 million dollars and has been earning interest since then. We can, as a board, we can have a public hearing to say that we want to utilize funding from this to do X. And once we do that, that we pull it out and it can't be replenished. If it were a, an emergency, we would go ahead and utilize the funding based on a board motion and then we would have to repay it within two years of using it. So basically, we have one point, almost 1.6 million dollars available to utilize for repairs to our buildings and facilities, equipment. So next up, we have commitment funds. Now, as a New York State School District, technically, these are not considered real reserve funds. They, the dollar figures that are in these funds are still considered part of our unrestricted fund balance. But what this does for us by establishing commitment funds is show that we have a plan in place for these different items. And as we go through them, you'll, you'll see what each item is for, but it just shows the state that we have a game plan for our funding, especially because we are over our 4% legal fund balance limit. So the first one is OPEB, and this is the most difficult one to understand and it's just the strangest thing ever. So other post-employment benefits commitment fund is really, it's funds that the state and federal government by a GASB, I think it's 54, Government Accounting Standards Board ruling, we have to put, have to have an actuarial calculations done. And this basically is saying, this is the amount of money that it sort of costs us by having our retirees in our health plan. If we did not have any retirees in our health plan, the actuaries would say, well, your health plan costs would cost you less because you have younger people in there that wouldn't be costing you as much. So even though we are current liability according to the actuaries is 1.2 million dollars, we're never actually going to get a physical bill that says you owe us 1.2 million dollars. Where that bill will sort of show up is in the increase in our annual healthcare costs. So this is established in the event that we have to actually end up paying this. Right now, they've never said, federal, state government, accounting standards board, or anybody has actually said that we have to pay any of these. But it really wouldn't surprise me if that were to happen sometime in the future. So for now, again, we have 1.2 million dollars sitting aside. And if we needed that for some reason, all the board has to do is make a motion to close the fund and it would go back into unrestricted. The next one is technology commitment, and this is just exactly what it says. It's our commitment to fund our technology across the board. Each year, it gets replenished up to a million dollars. And used, you know, throughout the year, if we need it, in our budget, you know, depending on what we're doing. Right now, we were able to use some of our grant funds to get a lot of our equipment, so we shouldn't need to pull a lot of it out for this fiscal year. But it would be able to cover any hardware or software costs that we have. That's, which is really why we were able to so easily go to one-to-one on laptops and one-to-one on laptops for not only staff but students as well, because we had this money set aside and we are able to use it on an annual basis to fund those types of costs. And next up is our capital outlay. And what this one is, is we can, each year, we can have a small project less than 100,000 dollars. And there's a caveat to that, that we can, we don't have to go through, you know, all the whole rigmarole of a tool, total huge capital project. If we have something that's, you know, less than 100,000 dollars, we can do it this way. You put it in the budget, you just make sure that everybody knows that, hey, we're put this in the budget, we're going to spend 100,000 dollars. And the best part about it is that we get building aid on it in subsequent years. Now, here's the caveat, which is good for us because we're a small, small, small city school district. We also have exceeded our debt with the amount of debt that we have out right now. So that means that we are able to fund capital outlays in excess of 100,000 dollars. So I've got some feelers out to our financial advisors as well to confirm that belief. We met with Young and Wright today and discussed this. So this might be a way to do smaller pieces of the building condition survey items that we want to address more quickly than putting them out in a full capital project. So the way this commitment fund is set up right now, it's a maximum of a million dollars and the 2021 balance would be 743,990. Next up is equipment replacement, considering that we put a ton of money in such things as, you know, steam and our transportation facilities and our, you know, we just have the new electric vehicles and all the equipment and stuff that we put in at Bets Park. We have an equipment replacement commitment fund, so we can start to use those. So if something goes down, that's, you know, maybe a 50,000 or 100,000 dollar piece of equipment, we don't have to go, oh my gosh, what are we going to do? What are we going to cut? How are we going to fix this? How are we going to replace this? We just say, hey, school board, we need this because it wasn't budgeted, it was an unexpected expense, et cetera. Can you approve this? And right now, we have 743,990 in here available for that as well. And again, maximum balance in here is a million dollars. And one of the other things I'm slowly working on, and I know I've said it before, but it's just, it's not a top priority. So it keeps getting pushed to the side with everything else going on. But one of the things I want to get is, is an equipment, a larger equipment replacement schedule from transportation, from facilities, from athletics. So we have kind of a schedule and what we're looking at and what may need replacement within the next three to 10, 15 years, depending on what the equipment is. So assigned fund balances, this is the amount of money that we pull out of our fund balance or out of our savings account essentially every year as revenue to go into the annual budget. Do we have to do it? No, we don't. But we do to make it, to utilize our fund balance because we are so overfunded. So right now, we have 3 million dollars, I think it is, that's coming into the budget for this year that came out of the existing fund balance. There's no maximum, as it states, just you just can't exceed your fund balance, you can't exceed what you have in your savings account essentially. So this little chart just shows you how, when I started here back in 1011, that's where we were, we were, you know, very low on assigned fund balance and now we're, we went way up in 1920. Then we're coming back down, we're going to kind of settle out between three and three and a half million dollars is what I've projected in the next five years. So here's the good part, fund balance. And we're going to slow down right here for a second because I know I've talked about fund balance and reserves a little bit. But in, in thinking about fund balance and, you know, what is fund balance? And what it is, is essentially, it's the amount of money that you've received, which is greater than the amount of money in which you've spent in a year. So basically, your net income. So in a, in a school district, we're not a, you know, a corporation or a company not subject to those rules, we have, you know, our leftover money, so to speak, is our fund balance. So how we use it, according to the state, we can only have a 4% fund balance and that 4% is 4% of your next year's budget. We are a little over that. And by a little, I mean a whole lot. So looking at what the state considers our unrestricted or unassigned fund balance, you take, you have to add in those reserves that I call the committed ones, so that's the technology, OPEB, equipment replacement and capital project, plus the unassigned, which is 23.4 million. So our grand total of unrestricted unassigned fund balance is 25 million dollars. Our next year's budget or current year budget is 47 million, so that's 52.5%. That 52.5% is what the state wants to be, 4%. So we're just a little overfunded. But we've told them that, you know, hey, there's a reason for that and in part is their own fault. They did not timely fund us for 17, 18, 18, 19, 19, 20 and 2021 Native American tuition contracts. Those costs alone were around 17,000, 17 million dollars. So had they given us those, you know, on a timely basis, this 25 million would be much, much closer to probably 10. So, you know, while they can, they can slap our hand and they can say that, you know, you're, you're breaking laws or whatever they want to call it, that, you know, you're above your 4% fund balance, which the majority of, of of the time we are and a lot of school districts are and a lot of school districts will be because of all this new federal aid that came in. You know, we have a plan somewhat, we have a very good reserves plan that we, I just kind of breathed through in each one of those reserves. We have commitment funds and, you know, we are working on a long-range capital plan that will really help us plan. So it's not like we have this money in the bank and we're not doing anything about it and it's just sitting there growing. So that's where, you know, I'd like to tell the state that, yes, we have too much money, but here's our game plan and how we're going to spend it.
So Karen, the, can you go back to that previous slide? So the, the 25 that we have, uh, that's totally, well, the 23480, that's totally unassigned in any of the commitment funds or the other reserves. That's sitting out there on top of
Yep.
everything else we have.
Yep, completely separate pocket.
Okay. And so if there was some kind of an emergency and we had to pull from some of the other committed funds, we always could if we okay.
Yeah, and we could even pull directly from unassigned. Excuse me, for example, you know, if we had some catastrophe and we needed to, you know, I don't even know, I can't even think of anything. You know, say the bus garage flooded and it ruined everything in there. Um, we could, you know, cover those costs. Obviously, we'd have an insurance, but we'd be able to, you know, expedite things because we have enough cash in the bank to, to help with that.
And we are in interest on that?
Yep, we sure do.
Okay.
It's not as much as we had been or the rest of the, the world has been because, you know, with this whole COVID stuff going on, it's just been a nightmare to get any good interest rates, but yes, we do earn interest on it. So our annual use of funding, once they're processed, so each year, I send you a board resolution that says, you know, we're going to use X number of dollars from workman's comp. We're going to fund workman's comp with X number of dollars. We're going to fund, you know, all the different reserves that I talked about and stuff like that. Those resolutions will be on the next board meeting. And once all those are, are in play, the 20, no, I forgot my number, the 23480 really becomes 20 million dollars. So we're pulling, you know, 3.2 million dollars out of fund balance and putting it in those individual reserves. At least, that's my recommendation and hopefully you will approve that at the next board meeting. Also, for 2223, I'm projecting to use three and a half million dollars of that for, um, the budget. And then, you know, there's a potential, is there going to be a transfer to capital? Don't know. My recommended use of impact aid, depending on what all the budgets come in at, is probably going to be around 15 million dollars. Right now, it's 13 something. So given staff increases and the number of staff that we've added, I can see it being probably closer to 15. Excuse me.
What did we get in impact aid this year?
Uh, this year hasn't been funded yet, but prior year was 16, 5, I think.
Okay.
I don't have it right off the top of my head, but I think it was 16, I know it was 16 something.
Okay.
So we're getting, when we initially got it back in 1314, we as a district said, we are going to wait until we have this money in hand in the bank before we budget it and use it. The first several years, um, we didn't use a lot of it. We used quite a bit of it, but we didn't use all of it. In the last two and three years, we've escalated that percentage that we're using. So now it's going to be, you know, we're going to, we're getting close to the point that, hey, we need to really watch this because if for some reason they don't fund us as much, for instance, two years ago, um, they funded us at 100% lot, which is the maximum amount that we can get. But last year, we're only at 90% lot. So, and that changes based on the number of applicants they get, based on the information provided to them, based on the number of mon, amount of money they get from the federal government. So we can't really say that we're going to get more or less than, than the previous year because there's all those other factors in that as well as our, our budget and our, um, the costs that are reported to the state each year. So next up, here's what we look like. So looking at this number, 2348, that's where we are, 63021. We need 17 million dollars to finish phases 3.3 and 3.4. Excuse me, we're going to use 3 million dollars for this year's budget. We have to fund reserves about 3.7 million dollars. Funding of food services, I got, my projection is that in three years, we can be back to self-sufficient for food services. But based on all the, the new changes in food services, the new staffing, et cetera, um, we're going to be in the red for a little bit. Change from fund balance for 2122, I'm estimating that this is going to be seven and a half million dollars. The reason I think it's going to be seven and a half is based on the money that we're getting from the federal government for CARES Act, for SIRS, for ARPA. There's all those different pieces of money that we're getting that we essentially pulled a lot of that money out of general fund. But we had it in originally budgeted in general fund, but now, hey, we have this other money. So I'm guessing, um, we're going to have an increase in fund balance for 2122 and about seven and a half million dollars. So then we're going to end with 6.7 million dollars. So that 6.7 starts next year. Then we're going to pull three and a half million dollars out and put it in the 20 to 23 budget. Then we're going to use a million dollars to fund the other reserves, reuse half a million for food services. I'm anticipating that our revenues will be 2 million dollars greater than our expenditures. And then I'm also going to recommend that we start a new commitment fund for the new retiree awards that were, that are part of the new union agreements that for each year, an individual has worked for the district, they get 1,000 dollars upon retirement. And the reason this is 600,000 dollars and I know it's not going to happen that every single person that is 55 or older would retire in one year because that would be decimating to us. But if everyone that's 55 or older retired, the first year that we would have to pay out that thousand dollars because that's done over three years, the first year would be just under 600,000 dollars. Second year, same thing, the third year drops down to 500. And it, you know, goes across the board. So I really think that we should set funds aside for that because it's going to be an annual expense and it's a, it's kind of a costly one. So at the end of the year, we would end up with 3.1 million dollars. That 3.1 goes to the beginning of the next year, we go through the same process. And now all of a sudden, hey, we might be hurting. And this does not take into account any transfer to capital for any future projects that have not even been discussed yet or any local share of any future capital project that may have been discussed. And it also assumes that there's 2 million dollars that are, is received greater than what is spent in each year. So don't panic. And the reason you don't have to panic, we're not running out of money, is don't pay attention to that, Mark. Is we currently have 26 million dollars in deferred revenues that are from impact aid. There's 26 million in cash sitting in the bank. Historically, we've received Historically, we've received about sixteen million in, in impact aid for the last four years that have been pretty consistent on how much we're getting. Currently, this year, we're using just over twelve million in the annual budget. The difference um, sits in deferred revenues until it's recognized and budgeted for purposes as determined by the board. So, like I said earlier, we receive the money in one year. Say we receive this, the money in twenty one, twenty two. So any funding that we received regarding impact aid from year, or July one of twenty twenty one through June thirty of twenty two, we set aside in deferred revenues. Then when we need it for the budget, we pull it out and put it into revenues. So if we were not to get any more um, impact aid, I would take from this twenty six million that's sitting in deferred, I would take twelve million dollars for next year's budget. But because we're gonna get an extra sixteen, so it slowly, you know, builds up again. Um, but my recommendation is to uh, create the capital reserve like we had talked about earlier and to create two commitment funds. One is the retirement awards that we talked about. The other is turf replacement. The turf is warranted uh, for twelve years. Now, the majority of it, the football, soccer, lacrosse field and the baseball field will more than likely make it twelve to fifteen years. But the box lacrosse pieces, because that's just so much more wear and tear on those, it might not make it that long. Or if it makes it to the twelve years, then it'll need to be replaced in the twelve years. Turf replacement cost right now, based on what we have over at Vets Park only, is estimated at seven dollars a square foot. And there's approximately two hundred and seventy squared, two hundred and seventy thousand square feet. So it's about one point nine million dollars to replace just what we have right now. So we need to, to, you know, really take a look at that, that, you know, are we gonna have two million dollars essentially in the budget in twelve years to be able to replace this? But if we have this commitment fund and we're working on replacing it, you know, this whole time, if we say it's gonna be twelve years, we can divide that um, you know, into two million and put that much away each year. Um, so we need to carefully plan how we're gonna continue to expend the funds and develop a plan um, for our future. So, and speaking of the future, capital projects. Phase three point three is now on the addition and renovations at Prospect. Um, the state FPF form for seven point six million dollars is being signed and submitted this week. Um, of that seven point six, three point nine of it is additions and three point six of it is alterations. Three point four will be the district office addition. And some um, other renovations within uh, the high school building. And phase three point five will be the track and ancillary buildings. Other items that have been discussed in some way, shape or form are a new transportation facility, a little warrior academy, AKA uh, early childhood center or um, softball field to be uh, turfed. So, and that's what we know of right now. That's what we've talked about in the past uh, as far as capital projects. So what I'm gonna talk about briefly next is the building condition survey. And this is the project that we're working on with um, Young and Right. So they've gotten us um, the preliminary, or not the preliminary, but the first piece of this whole project with them, and that's the building condition survey. So with this piece, if you look at the bus garage, the items that they're saying within one year need to be replaced or repaired is sixty nine thousand dollars. Within three years, four hundred and eighty seven, five. Within five years, two and a half million, within seven years, um, five hundred eighty thousand, geez, five thousand eight hundred dollars for grand total, oh, for grand total of three point one million dollars. And Greer Building, same thing. Um, one, three, five and seven years, high school and Prospect. So if you look down here at district wide, and shoot, I'm gonna have to. Let's see. Hang on. No, I can't see that all. All right, there we are. So for this one, um, my information's a little taller than my slide. So, um, district wide, seven hundred and one thousand dollars for year one for year three, or um, eleven point two million and uh, five years out, seventeen point seven million. Seven years out, eight point three million for a total of thirty eight million dollars. So that's just in summary, you know, what those items uh, would be to, to essentially fix things that, that uh, they discovered. So each building, I have this, let me try and pull this up again. So Greer Building, they're talking about hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So first year, this is what they're recommending uh, for Greer Building. The uh, building envelope exterior doors for overhead and exterior walls, columns wood, I'm not sure what those are, but concrete footings, security cameras, um, emergency standby power system. And heat generating systems for stairs. So they're looking at these items that they believe um, need to be fixed or repaired within the first year. So it's a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. This is year three. I only went to year three on each one of these, because it's, it's a lot more information um, on each one of these. So if you look at bus garage, here's the sixty nine thousand dollars we talked about earlier, which is exterior doors, replacement exterior door overhead uh, chimney. I was like, I didn't even know there was a chimney in the building. Um, pipe heating or cooling and piping. Um, twelve thousand air ventilation equipment for first one thousand dollars. So those are things that they feel um, should be addressed within year one. Um, back in the bus garage. And then, um, it goes on with all this other, other things for the bus garage. Same thing for main campus here, uh, the exterior doors, the PA systems, air handling, ventilation equipment. The catch basins, um, drop inlets and manholes, whatever those are, site furnishing benches. You know, all those different things. So the high school, I call it the high school, but it's the fifty Iroquois campus. Um, building is three hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars for year one. Year three, uh, or you know, you're looking at six point two million dollars. So what we're doing and, um, and this is the same thing for Prospect, all their different things. This is, now again, this is based on what Young and Right recommends. So first thing for um, Prospect, they're talking about theater sound system and theater lighting. But they use the stage. We wanna put a hundred and ten thousand dollars into that to have there. We wanna send them over to the high school and have them use the big stage and the big auditorium. Um, things like that. So this is, you know, currently, this is what um, uh, Young and Right has, has said, but we as a district need to go through the, determine what we want as priority. So, your takeaways from this whole thing is we have sufficient funding to operate our existing programs. We have funding to fund a portion of capital projects. But we need to carefully plan ahead to avoid having any funding issues, given our continual growth of the number of employees, our initiatives and our capital projects. So how do we get there? We continue our um, project with Young and Right to develop a long-range capital plan. And then, once that's developed, we go through quarterly reviews. So every quarter, we review the long-range capital plan and the long-range financial plan. Where are we? Where do we need to go? What happened in the middle that, you know, something funky happened in um, that, you know, ended up costing us a lot more than we thought or something completely opposite. We were gonna do something and then it decided to, no, let's not do that. Um, so we update those, the long-range capital plan and the long-range financial plan become essentially living documents and they're updated on a quarterly basis. And it's not just something that me, Mark and Bob or me, Mark and Bob and, and finance look over. It's something that really should be presented at every uh, board meeting and, and discussed. So we're always all on the same page and we're all moving in the same direction. Um, looking to, you know, proceed with the betterment of, of the district. And that is a wrap.
Wow.
So, um, before we jump in for questions, is there just a couple of comments? And Karen, I just, I wanna go back to, I think it was your summary slide where the seven-year building condition survey to do everything district-wide is roughly thirty eight million?
Yep.
Okay, just for the board's benefit, that's just the things in the building condition survey. That is not additional items that we decide to build or create. These are things within our buildings, our grounds, our operational systems currently. So if we decide to add uh, you know, musical carousel, um, that's not in there. Uh, the cost associated with the thirty eight million dollars of work, the architectural fees, the insurance fees, the construction fees. Those are, Karen, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, not in that original amount either, correct?
This number is construction only. No architect, no engineering, no, um, uh, GC, no clerk of the works, none of that.
So. Good. Uh, so just as a general guideline, and I defer to Carrie on this, but all of those other things added in, if we decided to do all of them, we're not advocating doing all of them in a seven-year period, but approximately twenty two to twenty four percent more to add all of the other requirements to do that work. Uh, and some of it will be addable and some of it will not be addable.
Correct.
And then, how long before, um, like, is this a finalized version of the building condition survey, Karen?
Yes, it is. But what we need to do now, um, like I talked about, the, I just used Prospect, I think it was, for the, the stage. Um, we need to, as a district, go through each one of these items and say, you know, what do we think is a priority? Excuse me. Maybe we want, um, you know, we're looking at, at Prospect right now and it says in three years, the roofs. Well, we've got the roof project in the current capital project.
Right.
So we've already escalated that one. You know, so maybe there's other things that, that want to be, you know, escalated versus being pushed down the list a little bit.
I mean, to me, that sounds like that's where we need to have a a retreat just to go over the building condition survey.
And I think that would be, I think that's a, a great idea. And I would um, request that that happened, but request that it happened after we get the long-range finance, or not financial, long-range capital plan worked out a little bit further.
Okay. Well, then you gotta let us know when you're ready.
Yep.
And we can all start looking at it. But uh, we really need to have a, just a group discussion on it.
Yep. Yeah, what I'll do actually tomorrow, when I go in the office, I will pull the full, um, like this um, data for each one of the buildings and um, I will email it to everybody, so everybody has it, so you can start looking at it, you know, when you want something to do. You know, you can look at that instead of watching the Bills games and get frustrated.
Oh, wow.
That's too soon, Karen. Too soon. So, d- do any other board members have any questions about the reserves or the uh, building condition survey and facilities? So, ca- can I just clarify? Karen, are you going to give us the go-no-go of when we can start to look at a board retreat based on the longer-range uh, plan? Or do we want to set an aspirational goal now and then we've got a deadline to try to reach?
Well, I'd like to talk to Alyssa, um, to see how long she thinks that whole process will take. So I can, I can um, report back at Tuesday's uh, board meeting of when we can establish the retreat.
And Alyssa is one of the um, uh, staff members from Young and Right, who is really quite an expert in the building condition surveys and long-range capital planning, uh, long-range facility planning. Okay.
Hey, can I just add, I wanna second that about getting this thing off the ground. We talked about this back in July. We talked about making this uh, priority for our August retreat. Um, we even tried to get people on board to meet that Saturday afternoon when we were in Niagara Falls. That was back in July, we talked about it. Now, here we are, August, September, October, November, and we're still just talking about setting this up. I just wanted to point that out.
Well, we have, we have a meeting um, established with, on December first, we were going to meet with um, all the admin team and do some discussions there. And then December can't remember what Friday it is, um, in December, early. Um, we're gonna meet with Young and Right again to go over the building condition survey and to go over um, the findings from the meeting that we had with the admins. And then we'll go again. So that's where I need to, to chat with, um, with Alyssa to find out what the, the schedule is, so I can come back and tell you how long we think this is gonna take.
Okay. And then we'll get a, a plan in place. Think once we can get it with the long range, um, just like you, you said in your slide, Karen, you know, then we can revisit it quarterly. And it will be something that's current and we're always working on it. So, I look forward to it.
Yeah, me too.
Does anyone else have anything for Karen?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Good job as always, Karen.
Going.
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, uh, so we have, um, and she popped in and then she, it looks like she just popped off Melanie Beardsley from Webster Zani. So she's signing right back in right now. And Melanie is going to talk to us about some board professional development with regard to public comments, uh, so that we can avoid the news. Hi Mel, welcome. Um, regarding public comments as well as uh, some updates and perhaps some perspectives on the COVID status for schools and our employees. So Mel, uh, all of the board members are here with the exception of Sue Freeze, who is excused. Uh, Mark, Karen and Kristen are also on the call with us.
All right, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
And I'm just gonna rename myself for a second. I participated in a moot court thing for UB the other day and it looks like I'm still listed as an evaluator. So, that's better. Um, and Bob, you're letting me share my screen, right? Share screen three.
It should be okay, Mel.
Yep, I should be good now. Everybody can see the screen, right?
Yep.
All right, so um, I won't take too much of your time, but I just wanted to run through a few things that um, Bob asked me to go through here with you today. Um, this is some really interesting topics that have come up lately uh, in board meetings and by boards. Quite recently, public comment and how to address public comment. Should you be responding? How are you gonna deal with potentially divisive and very difficult comments uh, that are coming up more and more during, during board sessions right now? And what options do you have? Um, so we're gonna go through that and then I'm gonna briefly review the newest, latest and greatest testing requirements that we have for COVID right now. I think it's really important that everybody know what your obligations are and generally what the rules of thumb are and some of the issues that we've been seeing so far. Um, if you have any questions, please feel free to, to just interrupt me. I'm happy to answer them to the extent that I can. And if I can't, I certainly will let you know. All right. So I wanted to talk about public comment first. Um, we've had a number of, of boards lately who have been bombarded, I'll say, with many, many people who have wanted to engage in public comment. And there's a lot of confusion out there about what public comment really is supposed to be, what the purpose of it is and whether or not you even are required to have public comment. So, public comment is actually not a statutory privilege or right that the members of the public have. That being said, the Commissioner of Education That being said, the commissioner of education and of course nearly every single school district and then state. Encourages and permits public comment. We find the value of public comment to be very much worthwhile and generally speaking. I've never met a board that doesn't want to hear from the public. So it's not a statutory right. We have had some people come to board meetings and say that it's their right to speak. Technically, it's not. However, we do usually highly encourage it because it's a very important part of the public board meeting. But I think what's more important is to understand what a board meeting is. There, we've had a, a lot of confusion about this too. A board meeting is not a meeting of the public. A board meeting is a meeting of the board to conduct their business. In front of the public, so the public understands. What are the concerns and business issues that the board is discussing? What is the business that they're transacting? What are the decisions that they are being made? It is not a meeting of the public, and I've heard that time and time again recently. With, with some public commentators and folks who are coming to the board. To really be heard by the board on issues that may or may not be before the board and, and they continually say. This is a public meeting, so I have a right to speak. It's not really, it's, it, it certainly is, and we're supposed to be transparent in, in the way that we conduct our business. But really, the purpose of the open meetings law and the purpose of having a public board meeting. Is so folks from our community, our employees, our students can come in and see. How is the board operating? How are they transacting business? How are they discussing and completing the work of, of the school district on a day to day basis? That is the purpose of the open meetings law and the transparency that we're talking about here. That's why public comment is a vital portion of that because you do often want to hear from members of the public, your employees, your students. About items on the agenda that are before the board, about action items that they may or may not be considering. So again, you're considering in the way that you transact and conduct your business. Again, that comment from the public and the input from the public to the extent that they wanna have it. So that is really. In an ideal world, how it all works together and I think. At times, it can be really helpful to clear up that. That setup and that structure because a lot of people do think it is my right to speak. I have a first amendment right. I'm allowed to say what I wanna say in a board meeting, no matter what, and that's not exactly right. Um, not that I would recommend that we go out and say, you, you public member are completely wrong about it. But I think it's helpful to encourage that type of education about what a board meeting really is and the portion of public comment. That can be inserted into the board meeting and viewed by the board. So I want to talk about some best practices for public comment. Um, I think it's really important that we create some expectations for public comment and the more expectations that you can lay out. In a clear and easy fashion for the public to understand. The better and smoother your board meeting or your public comment is going to go. Some districts have a policy or have a provision in their policy about public comment. I took a look at our policy manual online. It actually looks like we don't address explicitly public comment in our board procedure policies. So that is something that you, the board could consider for the future. Do you wanna develop some sort of public comment policy that you're inserting into your board procedure policy? Do you want to put forth some expectations and some protocols? And these are on, on this particular slide, all of the bullets that I've listed here. Do you wanna talk about whether or not people need to sign in? Whether or not you're going to limit the people who are going to comment publicly to residents of your school district? Seen other districts limited to residents and employees of the school district and that is a reasonable restriction. Um, quite recently, we had a board. Who had folks from out of town, not residents of their school district, not employees whatsoever. Start to come in droves to the board meeting to provide again their perspective on certain protocols. That the district was considering at the time. Again, that may be helpful. The board may want to hear that, but at the same time, if it's. If it's causing a disruption to the board and to the board's ability to have a reasonable and efficient meeting. You may wanna think about who you're permitting to come in and speak publicly at your meeting. Do you wanna put some sort of limitation on that? So you're really hearing from. Your community members and not somebody who is not from your community, not somebody who is not a resident, who's not paying taxes or who doesn't have. Um, a child in the school or is an employee of yours. Yes, Bob?
So I, I just, I just wanna clarify, we actually have a delineated policy. It's thirty two twenty.
Okay.
And we actually print this on all of our agendas. And it talks, because we had done this a number of years ago to be compliant with the indigenous policy and procedures for impact aid. And in that, um, that comment, it delineates public expression at our board meetings. That it's a participation in the meeting of the board, a period of time which persons may address the board. Should occur at a place and time on the agenda. Except the chairman, which would be the board president at the meeting, may at their discretion permit. Uh, public comments at other times during the meeting. And it must be directly related to an item currently under board discussion, not involve personalities. Provided further that the person wishing to make such a re- uh, remark is a bona fide resident of the school dish- district. And that, um, the, um, it does. It also indicates that it shall be specific to items on the agenda and shall not involve personalities. Um, and shall be limited to a total of fifteen minutes by a total time for the board member, but it does not. Um, indicate an individual speaker timetable. So theoretically, under our policy. Uh, in our guidance, one person could monopolize the entirety of public comment. Uh, we've never had an issue with that of anyone really even filibustering, but. That is something that we do wanna take a look at, but that's printed on each of our board agendas where there is public comment, which other than retreats. Um, is every meeting.
Good. What's interesting is that when you go to your board docs, if you search pu- public comment, it doesn't come up anywhere. So we should definitely look at that and possibly fix that. Um, because I had searched for it thinking, I'm surprised that you didn't have something about it on there. But if it goes under public expression, that might be why it wasn't showing up for me.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, 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 yeah. But I'm glad that you at least have a policy on it because I think that's helpful, but. To your point, Bob, that somebody could monopolize the entire time, I do think that that's important because you can really have a board. Uh, a board meeting go awry if somebody does do that. What I've seen other boards also do is say that no one is allowed to cede their time to anyone else. And if you are, are interested in doing that, we're not going to permit that. Everybody gets three minutes or five minutes. And if you are speaking on behalf of an entire group, which we just certainly have had before, if you're speaking on behalf of an entire group. You can have five minutes versus the individual three minutes. That's another way to delineate it. And what that really helps with is the efficiency of the board meeting because. If you have a number of people who are coming to speak on the same thing as an entire group. Is it really worthwhile for the board to hear the exact same message five times? Or is it more efficient for one person to speak on behalf of the entire group? They're given a little more time. You hear the same message and the board knows that it's coming from the group. The theory behind that, that type of protocol where you limit it for groups. Is that we really don't need to hear the same thing time and time again. It is helpful for the board to know that it's coming from a group versus a single person, and so that is helpful there and you could consider something like that. I think one of the most important things with respect to public comment are the listing or descriptions, uh, of the parameters for public comment. And what topics can't be discussed in public comment. And I'm talking about, and Bob referred to this when he was reading through the policy. Individual matters, personnel matters, the naming of students. Um, even though if it's a parent, they technically can disclose their own child's name to the board. That's not technically an issue. But the minute they start talking about any other student, it is absolutely problematic. You know, I think it's really important for individuals to understand when you come to the board to talk about a particular matter. It's, it's gotta be generally something that's on the agenda that certainly is appropriate. And it can't be something where you're going to single out a particular employee or person in front of the board. That particular issue more likely than not is going to be something that the superintendent or an administrator is going to hear about and handle. With that particular parent or community member who is coming forward. Which really leads to my next point. When we're thinking about. When somebody comes to us in public comment to talk about a particular issue and they start. Delving into these areas that are problematic. It is vital that they immediately be stopped in a very professional, civil and courteous way and say, you know, I apologize. I'm sorry, I'm going to have to cut you off, but this is, you're, you're talking about individuals or you're starting to talk about matters that are not before the board right now. That's inconsistent with our policy and our expectations for public comment. I would refer you to the superintendent, uh, who will certainly hear your concerns and your questions and be able to, again. Get you in touch with the right person or office that can handle the concern that you'd like to bring forward. So it's not as if you're saying, I don't wanna hear from you, parent or community member. You're directing them to the right place and the right forum to have that conversation. Because it's not in a public meeting that you're really supposed to be talking about those things. Cause again, the meeting is really for the board to transact its business and discuss the business that's before it. So I think that's really important. What I've noticed with many boards lately is that the board president prior to public comment. Has began reading, again, another statement, whether it's from your board policy or something that they've developed based on the board policy to remind people. Here are the expectations for public comment. Here's what you can expect from us, the board in response to any public comment. And here's what the consequences are if you start to delve outside of those, those parameters, to be honest with you. Um, we've had to be in some districts a little bit more, uh, restrictive. Unfortunately, because people have been very animated and emotional these days about particular issues, which again. Emotion is just fine, but it can't delve into obscene, defamatory, threatening, uh, conversations and topics. And so we've had to unfortunately remind some people of that. Hopefully you don't have those types of things before you, but if you do. You have to stop it immediately and you have to put the person on the right track again, and you give them the opportunity to correct. And finish their public comment, and if they can't, then you excuse them and you have to, you have to ask them to go sit back down so the board can continue its meeting. So additional considerations and, and these are just some, some ideas. I talked about the board president's statement before public comment. Um, we've had a number of boards who have actually gone to a more thorough statement beforehand. Frankly, addressing a number of the concerns that people have had over COVID protocols. Or I, I fully expect some other more hot button topics to come to light with school districts where people really want to be heard. And NISBA has actually also put out a, a proposed template statement. I certainly can send it to you, Bob. Can send it to Reese, to Teresa, she'd like to take a look at it. Where they have noticed an increased participation in board meetings, which frankly is good. I mean, we want the public to come to our board meetings. We want to participate. This is a meeting in, in open, so they can understand what the board is doing. But again, keeping everybody with the same expectations. NISBA has taken on the option of putting out a proposed statement before public comment to again remind everyone. About the parameters and what's expected. Some other options that you can have, and I've seen other boards do this. Speakers have to sign in if they're going to speak. They have to identify the topic of their comment. And they have to have a plan to follow up with the speakers, meaning. Make sure that you know how you're going to follow up with somebody who brings an issue to the table. That may need to be addressed, whether it's by the board president, whether it's by the superintendent. How are you going to respond to that and, and how should you respond to that? Which the general rule of thumb is. It's, it's not appropriate to respond in that moment, especially as an individual board member. You know, the board acts as an entity. You are an, an entity and you make decisions as an entity, not as individual board members. So. Holding it in, trying not to respond or react or interact with the speaker during public comment really is vital. Because you're there to conduct district business. And you can request that the superintendent or the board president is going to follow up with respect to the comment or the person afterwards. But engaging in a back and forth usually leads to a conversation that may or may not be appropriate for public session. And may or may not be relevant to the agenda that the board has for that particular meeting. There are a few instances where responding to a public comment is certainly appropriate and in fact may be a best practice. And it's really these three situations I have on this slide. Inaccurate comments, misinformation or information that is simply wrong. You know, if, if somebody's making a statement about you close school because you just don't want kids to be educated, Mr. Bridenstine. And clearly there was absolutely no reason. Well, no, in fact, there was a reason for closing school the other day. It was the weather, our COVID numbers were X Y Z. We had, you know, um, con- consulted with the department of health. Whatever the case may be with a statement like that where it clearly is not based on any sort of fact that you can easily rebut. And it's appropriate to rebut. Of course you can do that and sometimes that really is helpful. Comments related to policy where you can refer the person directly to a policy that may be on point that the person may or may not know about. Is always, always an appropriate response. Again, you may not know it at the time, so it may be something that the superintendent or the board president needs to respond to the person later on. And then comments that warrant placement on the agenda. So these are really comments that are talking about. Issues and concerns that the board may want to put on an agenda for a future board topic. You know, this would be something that I think the board would probably talk about. At agenda prep further on with the board president and the superintendent. But again, this is the value of that public comment session. Members of the public, your employees, your students may bring issues and items to the table. That the board considers to be worthwhile to be putting on the agenda to discuss in further detail. So those types of things are things that you absolutely could consider responding to. I would again caution you about responding immediately because I always think more often than not, taking a moment to think about. The person's comment and how you may wanna respond to it is a good idea. Think responding in the heat of the moment oftentimes is usually gets you into more trouble than it's worth. So, but these are the, these are the items that you would actually look to providing some sort of response and commentary. If they're brought up in public session where you can give some feedback to members of the public. And I think when you do see that back and forth in a very limited instance, when it is appropriate. Think members of the public really appreciate that because they don't feel then. That the board is just never responding to them in any way, shape or form. No, you're responding when it's appropriate and if it's not appropriate because it's a personnel matter, for example. They're hearing and seeing the board president and our superintendent say, you know, that's really not an appropriate topic for public comment. I'd be happy to speak with you afterwards or to send you to the building principal where I'm sure you can have a conversation with him or her to address that particular matter. Seeing that type of interaction, I think really helps the public's view of how the board operates and what the purpose of the board meeting really is. So that's my public comment session. Um, before we go on to testing requirements, any thoughts right now? Any, any issues that the board has been dealing with or any questions that you have about? Um, the, the recommendations that I have, and just so you know, I did send this presentation to Bob, so I'm sure he'll share it with everybody. Um, at some point to the extent that you find the slides to be beneficial.
So Mel, I would like to get that template that you're talking about. Just, we do read things and people are required to sign in. Um, and state what they. What they wanna talk to the board about, so we do have that, but it's an, always a good reminder that. We shouldn't be going roundtable, um, to try to respond to everybody. Um, whenever they just make a statement, so.
Absolutely. I'll send that template statement, um, to Bob so he can disseminate it to, to, to everyone. Um, so you can see that and it's a natural reaction to want to address somebody's question or concern that they're bringing to the table, right? We're all human. That's what you would want to do in that particular scenario. But in public comment, that's really not the best way to go. But in public comment, that's really not the best way to go more often than not. There's likely another avenue to address the concern that the person is bringing to the table. That would be in the best interest of the board and still support the efficiency of the board meeting that you've got. Okay?
Mel, before you transition, we, we have a requirement through the Impact Aid program. And the Indigenous Policy and Procedures that if someone formally presents a concern and we've. Subscribed to the notion that a formal. Presentation of a concern occurs at any articulated board meeting, whether it's the Board of Ed meeting. Or the Finance Committee or the Indigenous Ed Committee meeting. Or in writing, then we by policy to comply with Impact Aid. Are required to respond in writing within thirty days. It may be, thank you so much. I look forward to meeting with you next week to discuss this in person. And we keep track of that and we log those because we have to, while we don't always get asked for that. We have to have a running record under the requirements. For the Impact Aid program. So we've gotten better at that, but our, our statement in the beginning. Is, is something that we've gotten back into the habit of reading. And we do respond. The one piece that I would suggest maybe that the board considers. Just, you know, for future kind of consideration is. That if it rests on the board president only to read that statement. Then that puts the board president in, in an awkward position. To read that public statement and maybe that's okay. But it is also powerful that board members also at each meeting rotate and read that. I've seen that done so that the board president isn't always the heavy or the bad guy. Which sometimes can make the meetings a little bit more controversial or tense. We've not really experienced that. In any magnitude compared to other districts in Erie County, but it's, it's a thought to. Share some of that responsibility with the board so that. It's not just the board president or the superintendent cutting them off.
Do you have, yeah, do you have that statement too? I mean, Teresa mentioned that you have people sign up for public comment. Is that my understanding?
Yes.
And so do you have that statement? On the sheet that they sign up in because I, I think that's sometimes helpful to, some people never read it, but. Sometimes they do and they say, oh, I didn't know about that. And so if they see it, I think that's also helpful.
I, I see the sheet and it's landscaped and I, you know, it's got their. Whether they're here, whether they want to talk, whether they want to share something in writing with the board. I, I'd have to look at it. To, to, to verify that.
Yeah, that could be something that you consider too.
And I have a question, Mel. Our policy or public expression says they have to be a bona fide resident of the district. We did have a gentleman speak several months ago, I think last school year. When we approved the high school raising the progressive pride flag. He came to speak. He was generally very respectful. And, but he was not a resident of the district. We didn't realize that at the time. And I've seen news reports where. It has become a hot issue for a resident to give their name and specific address. And then they've been kind of. Targeted in the community or I, I don't know what the internet term is when. You call them out and you go to their house and I, I'm drawing a blank here. I'm sure Mark knows what it is. But. I, I'm a little uncomfortable with someone giving their address out publicly. Because if some lunatic or some person with an overabundance of enthusiasm on a particular topic. May put that person who's legitimately coming to air a concern in harm's way. Is there a liability with that? Should we take a look at that or just have them fill the form out? I'm not sure what the best practice is for that, but it is something that's a newer concern.
Yeah. So there's not, there shouldn't really be any liability on the school district for a member of the public coming. And then providing their address because they want to speak publicly. However, I, I have seen other districts who have done it and who require people to state their address publicly. And I have the same concerns you have, Bob. What, what you could do instead is have them sign up and you could have your district clerk or somebody else even after the fact. Just take a quick look at the sheet and see if they can verify that people are residents. Now, the board can always invite somebody else who's not a resident to speak. There's nothing that prohibits it. It's just a restriction that is a reasonable restriction. If you wanted to actually implement that. But if you wanted to do it that way, where you had them list their, their address on the sheet, if you will, so they're not stating it publicly. Or not listed at all and have somebody again, just take a brief audit of the sheet after the fact. And if you find that there's a non-resident who came and spoke. You can always contact that person and just let them know, we realized that you came and spoke. Please be advised, only residents or employees or whatever your restrictions are. Are allowed to speak during public comment. By our review, you are not a resident of the district. So if you sign up to speak again, you will not be permitted to participate in public comment. You know, something like that where you're not again. Blasting everybody's address in the meeting. And I think that's come, come out more, especially with virtual meetings and the recording of meetings now, right? It didn't happen very often because most people, not many people went to board meetings at all and they weren't always recorded. So. You didn't have a record of somebody stating their address online. Now that's not the case anymore. So it is a concern. I have seen it before. And those are the options I think you could look to, uh, unless you want to open it up to everybody and not really enforce the resident, non-resident rule. You know, to the extent that you want to, but those are the options you have.
Thank you.
Absolutely. All right. Anything else on public comment? All right. Well, let's, let's briefly talk about the, the latest and greatest of testing requirements for, for COVID nineteen. Most of you, I'm sure have probably gotten some updates. And have heard this both in the news, with neighbors, friends, with family, with everybody, right? What is going on with testing? So in the beginning of September, September second, twenty twenty-one, there was an emergency regulation that came out. And then the Commissioner of Health issued a determination stating that teachers and staff, all P, P, P through twelve. Public and non-public schools were going to have to go through these testing requirements. And it really stems to a number of people, including substitute teachers, school, student teachers, administrators, of course, support staff. Even contractors who are working in our school. All of these folks are covered under these testing requirements. And we're going to talk about, you know, where there could be a couple of different exceptions, one of which Bob and I have actually talked about just recently. So who has to be tested and who could potentially be exempt from testing? Individuals have to be tested once per week if they fall into any of the geographic categories where there's low. All the way up to a high risk of transmission. Everybody's in these categories right now in New York State. I, I suspect that we're going to continue to be in these categories for quite some time. But I think there's, I, I think many people don't realize that there's actually a threshold. Geographically for transmission rates that we have to get to first to trigger these testing requirements. And once we start to fall below those thresholds, we will no longer have these testing requirements. And think about last school year, you know, last school year, we had the different zones, right? And Salamanca luckily was not really impacted a lot by many of those zones. Whereas the suburban school districts were in these really funky zones for many, many weeks and months. And we're engaging in testing all over the place. So just know that there is an end in sight to the extent that our transmission rates. Start to decrease more and more and more. Once we are below low, we will no longer have this testing requirement. So it won't be a forever situation. The other thing that you should know is this emergency regulation that came out is only in place for ninety days unless it's extended. I fully believe that it will be extended to the extent that the transmission rates are still what they are right now. For some time. So I doubt that we're going to be done with this in ninety days. However. It is a safe hold in there, so it won't continue forever, but it will likely continue, I, I suspect. For probably thirty day time periods after the initial ninety days. So it was initially issued September second, twenty twenty-one. So we've got three months from that. And then expect that we're probably going to get some sort of monthly update as we continue on. Do we have to continue this? Do we not have to continue this? But I, I think it's helpful to know that because I think most people just think. I have to be tested right now or I can opt out if I don't want to be tested and I want to be vaccinated. And this is just how it's going to be forever. It's not technically the case. I'm sure it feels like that for many, many people right now. But the end can be in sight to the extent the transmission rates go down. So that, that's the, the, the standards that we're working with here. Who's exempt from testing? Fully vaccinated teachers, staff, contractors, anyone can opt out of the weekly testing. As long as they provide us proof of vaccination, which can be their Excelsior pass or your vaccination card. You have to be fully vaccinated, which means you have to be through your second dose and the twenty-one or twenty-eight day time period, depending on which. Which vaccine you've received. Once you're past that time period, you are deemed to be fully vaccinated. Who else is exempt from the testing? So the determination specifically listed pre-K programs that were outside of the school district. Meaning a pre-K program that wasn't lumped in to one of our district buildings and it was held by, let's say, you know, one of the local daycares. For example, if you had a pre-K program that was not in school. You don't have to engage in this testing and the teachers that are working solely in that pre-K program would not have to be tested. The question came up. If we have other programs that are not in our district at all, community ed program, for example. Would those folks have to be tested? I took the position that we would treat them the same exact way we would treat the pre-K program. And that the determination from the Health Commissioner does not address every single scenario. So I would treat them the same exact way as a pre-K program that's not in our building. And those folks do not have an obligation to engage in this weekly testing. Same thing, for example, for somebody, if we did have somebody working entirely remotely for us. If they are not coming in our building, if they are not coming in and having face-to-face contact with our students and our staff. Then I would say that they are exempt from testing. So I, I think all of those situations are, are folks who are going to be exempt from testing along with the fully vaccinated folks. And then it really whittles it down to folks who have decided to either not share with us their vaccination information. Which surprisingly, I have had some people who have felt very strongly that they do not want to share their vaccination information. And so they will engage in the weekly testing versus giving us their vaccination card or their Excelsior pass. That is their choice. They are allowed to make that choice. We respect that choice that they make. And therefore we put them into the weekly testing obligations. Of course, some people feel very strongly about not wanting to get the vaccine or they can't get the vaccine for a medical reason. Then they go to the weekly testing. I have seen, and I don't think that they have gone very far. Some employees say that they have a medical or religious exemption to the testing itself. Generally speaking, when we have had some employees come to us and talk about a medical or religious exemption. To the testing itself, to doing the nasal swab, the saliva test, what have you. I have generally recommended that school districts engage in the same interactive process for any other medical exemption to a job requirement. And we don't just say no to them. We ask them questions, we interact with them. More likely than not, I think it's unlikely that there is a medical or religious exemption to having a saliva test. Or a nasal swab or engaging in this weekly testing. But again, I don't want to say, never say never. And I think it's really appropriate that you go through the process to make sure that you understand from the employee. What their concern and what their position is and why they believe that they have an exemption to the testing. But that being said, I think it is very unlikely. So for right now. Everyone, and the other thing I should mention is in this determination from the Health Commissioner. They didn't put in any particular start time. There was no start time. There was absolutely no start time. So in the beginning of September, when this first came out, districts were not provided with any information about when they were supposed to start this. So most districts, and Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, I think Salamanca was, was in this boat too. Started working with their county departments of health. To figure out, can we get testing on district premises? So we can provide a convenient way for the employees who are going to engage in this testing. To comply with this mandate that it, that we are currently dealing with. And so many, many districts started the testing, once they were able to get the county department of health. To set up a testing opportunity for our, our employees on our premises. And again, there's not a particular expiration date. It's continuing for ninety days right now. We're going to be looking at the transmission rates. I expect that this is going to be again. Reinstituted every thirty days after the initial ninety days. And we'll just have to keep an eye on everything as we continue to go through this. But those are the overall requirements when we're talking about. The testing requirements for the opt-out for vaccinated individuals. And then what happens if we don't comply? So technically, if we don't comply, there can be a maximum fine. Of up to one thousand dollars for each violation. The Department of Health and the determination from the Health Commissioner has said each day that we are not complying can be a separate violation. So again, I haven't seen any departments of health so far. Really go after a school district when we're talking about testing. Up here in Erie County, we have had our Department of Health. Really put together a group of what's called sanitarians. And the sanitarians from the Department of Health are going into school districts and auditing them. And when I say auditing them, they're auditing the compliance with the COVID nineteen protocols. Is there, are, is everyone wearing a mask? Is there appropriate social distancing? How are the protocols being implemented? I have not heard from any particular district about the auditing of those programs and how they're working on it. But I have seen, of course, in the news and some of you may have seen it too. Right now, the Department of Health, at least up here in Erie County, has issued a clarification to one particular suburban school district about mask breaks. So up here, they're taking a very aggressive stance. I don't necessarily know that Dr. Watkins at Ketteraugus County is going to take the same sort of tact. With the districts down, down in the southern tier in Cat County. I certainly hope that that's not the case. That's not how they've been operating throughout this pandemic. That's certainly not my experience. With the other districts that are down in Ketteraugus County that they've been working with. So fingers crossed that hopefully you can continue on with the relationship you have with Ketteraugus. The Ketteraugus County Department of Health, because I think it's been overall a fairly good relationship and less adversarial than what I've seen. With some other counties and some other districts.
So if I can just jump in here with regard to this and kind of in general terms. We still have a significant number of full-time, regular, Monday through Friday. Type employees who have opted out of disclosing their vaccine status or ta- testing. We have a number, a significant number of our full-time staff. That are participating in the testing protocols with Cat County. And that's good. And, but we still have a number that are choosing to go independent. We support that. That is certainly their prerogative as long as they comply. We've had one instance of all of our staff. That has not complied and we're dealing with that individual separately and privately. They are not at a point of termination. But we are following the protocols that the, the guidance and the requirements force us to do. It's certainly not something we would normally do without this directive. I think it's important to note that since about two weeks ago. When we got the okay from Cat County that they would provide the onsite testing clinic. That the time expended by Julie Creed, our nurse manager. Josie Hubbard in our personnel office, Ray Haley as our chief of security. And my office, in addition to Karen and Mark and building principals. This requirement has been exhaustive. Of an, of an endeavor for us to make sure that we're compliant. It has been substantially disruptive to operations to comply with this. We are complying with it. We have another test clinic tomorrow. The test clinic will be operational even if school is not in session. Because of holidays, which creates an additional burden for our buildings and ground staff to have two site locations open. I, I just want the board to understand. and to anyone that may listen to this recording once, you know, we we post it, that this has been an incredible burden for our staff. And it has been substantially concerning to the faculty and staff who are having to make the decision to be tested weekly as opposed to vaccine, uh to have a vaccination or to get the vaccine. Um, and as Mel indicated, this is going to continue for the foreseeable future. I have not seen nor I'm aware of any additional staff member of late that has made the determination that because of this, they're going to reconcile their personal beliefs and get vaccinated. I'm sure that that may happen, but I'm not aware that it has happened at this point in time. So um if 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 you call and you don't get us right away, we are probably test tracing or contact tracing individuals to make sure that they're compliant. Um, and it has been a significant time um stealer.
Bob, I just wanna, you know, we've talked a couple of times about this and just want to make sure that all the board members are aware that if we don't comply, that we could be removed from the board. And to me, that's pretty serious. That if if we're not trying to follow this mandate, so which which kind of goes back to if anybody tries to say anything during uh public comment, you know, whether you're for or against it, I just want to make sure everybody understands that, you know, what the implications could be to the board members if we don't follow through uh along with the fines of the school district, which is something we don't want to have happen. So that I just want to make sure everybody understands that and knows.
Yeah, I think. I was just gonna say, Mel, before you jump in, I think there's two factors here. There's willful ignoring of the regulations, which would be really bad. Um, and and I do believe that the commissioner would remove board members and would not play games and pull certifications of individuals who played fast and loose uh and willfully ignored the directives. As opposed to, we have a staff member that we believed was tested or they get tested weekly in the county or for some other reason the test results get voided and we don't have it. We're looking at complying with it to be tested weekly. What those test results are is another part of the process. And, you know, we are spending hours each day in pursuit of compliance with something that is never been done before at all, let alone every week. And um we're going to get this as right as we can get it. I'm confident of that. We've got great staff deployed. But I am not personally going to put any of you in jeopardy. I'm not going to put myself in jeopardy or any other staff member and allow them to kind of play fast and loose. It's just not an option. It's not going to happen.
And the only thing I was going to say is that I SED uh is taking these these emergency regulations and determinations from the commissioner of the Department of Health and the county health departments quite seriously. And they certainly have come out and said quite publicly that they expect all school districts to be complying and following these these regulations and these determinations that are coming right now while we're still in the pandemic. So we certainly know where SED stands on this. And I agree with Bob that, you know, a willful failure to not comply with these with these regulations and these requirements is very different than, um, you know, trying to get things together and comply as best we can while knowing that there are going to be some practical obstacles that you always be faced with. And so we will do the best that we can and continue to do the best that we can in a very unique situation and in an unprecedented time.
Does anyone have any questions from Mel? Or comments?
Well, thank you all for your time. I really appreciate it. And I will uh get out of your hair and let you continue on with the rest of your evening.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everyone.
Okay, so we're gonna transition to roundtable. And I believe we have three district roundtable topics from um Mark and myself. And Karen, thank you for your uh facilities uh and financial conversation. I'm going to kick it to Mark to talk about uh an issue that we had uh last week at the Personnel Committee about a position we're looking to create and uh and why. So I'm going to turn it over to Mark uh for that follow up conversation from Personnel.
Sure, thank you. Uh, let's see. Um, this was originally presented to uh the Personnel Committee. Here we go. Let's see. Can everybody see that?
Yeah.
All right.
There we go.
A couple of things were brought to my attention regarding uh service that we currently have that's provided through Erie One BOSIS. This is the customization of Power School, which is our student management system. This particular service allows the district to essentially buy a Erie One BOSIS has one person at the moment who is capable of providing this service. We were informed that the, actually, we were informed last year that the service was going to end. We were informed again this year that the service um would be ending. We sort of finagled it to allow the service to continue. We're heavily invested in this service, meaning in a moment you'll see what it is that that does um and allows us to do. So this is just a quick rundown of the current projects and some of the outcomes that the customization allows us to do with Power School. One is the Impact Aid Report. It allows Karen to run the report to identify exactly who lives on territory. This is obviously not something that comes with a typical Power School package. It's very specific to our district. The programmer went in, matched up the residents um of the student addresses of where they actually reside, matched that into the territory boundary in uh a mapping software. And then we now with pretty much the click of a button can identify who is exactly on territory and off territory. And we can run that pretty much instantaneously. We have the Sports and Athletic Tractor. It allows our parents to sign our student athletes up and complete the history form. This sounds like it's not really a big deal. But what this does is it allows our students and parents just simply to go into Power School and sign their students up. Previous to this, we had lists that were sort of typically signed up in the office. We then had to go through and identify if there was a health history issue um with the coach. Those had to be then printed off, given to the coach. If a student comes on late, there's a chance that we may not know what their history is. If they have an allergy to something, underlying medical condition, if they have an IEP, they need to be informed of that. There are an awful lot of holes. So this is, there's several other things here. Um, our related service model uh module, the online enrollment process. Kristen could talk about that because it affects her office, but it allows us to basically do the vast majority of the enrollment, school enrollment process online um and has reduced the time it takes to enroll a student drastically. I don't know. Kristen, can you speak to what the actual change has been there?
Sure. When we were doing the typical registration process in August and September, we could have anywhere from thirty to we had seventy outstanding students that were waiting to register and get all of their information into start school in September. This year, on the first day of school, we had four. Um, it has allowed everyone to be processed in a timely fashion. Our longest day has been three days before a child starts, and that was before school started. And now that we're into the school year, students are starting within a twenty four to forty eight hour turnaround. So without that module, we really didn't realize how much of an impact it had on us until we were forced by COVID to start using it immediately.
Um, there's also the customization of report cards. We're transitioning from a well, I guess I would say transition or uh traditional report card process to a standards based report card. These are multi-page report cards that have to interface with the student grading system that teachers use. We can, this is the work that this particular individual does when we buy him from BOSIS. Um, there's also a field trip module, um lunch counts and all sorts of other customizations. This is just, you know, probably the top ten. There's also discipline modules that allow us to track student discipline. It goes on and on and on. So this is the type of product that's produced through this service. The problem and concern that we have is that all of those will be going away likely at the end of this year. Um, and as soon as an update to Power School comes through, we've been told that Erie One BOSIS is not going to um provide this service anymore. There is no service for this for CA BOSIS. Um, I haven't had a chance to look and see what, you know, when we say CA BOSIS and Erie One or Winnie Rick, that is pretty much all of the schools this side of Rochester. Um, I don't know how cross contracting with another state or, you know, uh buying a person to come on site from, you know, hours away would really work. But getting cutting to the chase, the reason this came to the Personnel Committee is because we believe there's an opportunity to create a position. CA BOSIS has indicated the title. It's still a competitive bu- uh position, which is Senior System Analyst Programmer. This person would do all of these services um that we've listed here as well as train our people to be able to essentially replace them if that person were to go. We don't like to be dependent on an individual person, um and we're learning that that can become a problem, us and several other districts. So the key would be for our people to get trained on this. They would also, you can see down here, supervise pretty close to all aspects of Power School use um and be our primary trainer. So if what what we're looking at with BOSIS right now, that extended support is referred to as we buy this person, this programmer for forty two days at a cost of twenty four thousand dollars. So that's what we pay to BOSIS for the forty two days. We also pay them fifteen thousand dollars a year for support and training. If we create this position, those two fees that we would post uh pay to BOSIS would go away. We would have our own person. Now, that doesn't come without a cost. The approximate salary that we're looking at is around seventy nine thousand dollars. There is another factor to this, which is this particular person, um we can farm out to other districts. Um, and that rate is about five to seven hundred dollars a day. And we estimate that on an annual basis, we can recoup thirty to forty five thousand dollars um of the salary. So that's the position that was proposed. I'm thinking some of it was because we didn't have as much information. I don't know if there's more information I can provide to people. It is a, it is a civil service position. It is competitive, meaning it would have to come off of a list. At this point in time, there is no list, but the person would have to test in order to stay on the list. So that's sort of where we're at. The um consensus of the uh Personnel Committee was to bring it before the whole board um to discuss. This would be the part where we discuss.
Well, I'll jump in first. I'm the one who suggested bringing it to the full board because I'm not in favor of this. I was on the fence. And since then, I've changed my mind to, I'm really not in favor of this. I asked Mark why we would buy into a program that is so unique that we can't find another way to update it. Another question, I believe Barb even asked the question as well, what does Marcy do? Then, you know, in thinking about this and then also seeing a Facebook post today, my question is, what does Sue do? Susan Schaffner. And actually, I just pulled this up and I wanted to read this. This is on Aaron Strauss's Facebook page today, and it's congratulating Sue on winning a two thousand twenty one Outstanding Leader of the Year by the New York State Association for Computers and Technologies and Education Association. So part of a couple of paragraphs down, Aaron's writing this. Susan came to our district in two thousand seventeen as a computer technology teacher. She has twenty plus years of combined teaching and IT experience under her belt, which she aptly applied here. In two thousand eighteen, our district quickly recognized Susan for her gifts in planning, speaking and teaching technology integration and promoted her to to technology coach. Since then, Susan has been responsible for launching many of our edu tech initiatives, including the comprehensive Power School LMS system, the ClassLink all in one sign in app, and serving as technology coordinator for our CTE Project Sammy College Certification Program, which just launched this fall. So again, we've got Marcy. And apparently, we've got a rock star with Sue Schnaffner who brought Power School to us. So that's why I said I'm not in favor of this position. And even if we do move it forward, I'm I'm not, I'm not in favor of this. We have the person who brought Power School to us already employed, so why create another position?
So I can answer a couple of those questions. You know, this is, the title of this program person is computer programmer. Knowing how to operate a computer and programming the computer are two entirely different things. Sue is terrific. She brought the Power School Learning Management System, which is Class Pages. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the massive database that manages every piece of student data um behind the scenes. There is, this is why we have a service that's provided through BOSIS. Typically, you know, a school does not own a programmer. And what we're looking to do is if we want to be able to provide these customized services, really, you know, this is how we would do it. Uh, if we, again, it's a matter of becoming efficient and effective. We can do it other ways, you know, so every other district, you know, has an online enrollment process that takes or not an online enrollment process or some third party um that takes hours. Karen can go back to doing the Impact Aid Report. Without this customization, there's not, you know, it's not like we can buy a package that will tell us who lives on territory and off territory. So these, you know, and Marcy Brown is an administrator who manages and oversees every facet of our information technology network. She's not a computer programmer. So again, I just want to make sure that we're clear on what we're talking about. We're not talking about somebody who uses the computer. We're not talking about a teacher who utilizes it or a teacher like Sue Schnaffer, who's phenomenal. We, she has presented to us on Class Pages. She has basically managed all of the learning management system, which allows us to teach while we are remote and has done so. She's presented to us multiple times. We recognize her. But I would say her talents would be very much wasted if we locked her in an office and had her programming uh computer language. But again, all of these things can occur in a variety of different ways. We can purchase other services to do these. And, you know, if we, again, it's really just up to the board to decide if this is the direction you'd like to go. If not, we can come up with other ways to get it this time.
So Mark, why aren't they um supporting Power School anymore?
So they are supporting Power School. They're not supporting this portion, which is the customization. They would rather have us, so you can see every time we want to make a change to a report card, then we would have to hire their programmer at a rate of two hundred and fifty dollars an hour. They don't want to have us be able to run the Impact Aid Report or the Sports Athletic Tractor. They would prefer to sell us another module that gets added on. So there are competing pieces. Power School is still going to be what? There's only two, maybe three student management systems in the vast majority of New York State. Power School, which most large districts utilize, E-School, which is what we utilized before. And some other, there's like School World or something. That's another one. Power School is one of the largest student management systems literally in the world. It is used in every country that has organized education. It's customized in our case for New York State. We look to be able to say if we want to do some of these nice things that we do, you know, the field trip module, so there's no paper, we can take and develop this. Or we can, I probably buy some other add on piece that teachers will have to go to to then, you know, complete in Field Trip, field tripper dot com, then send that over to Power School, and then we print it out through Power School. We looked at using the Power School as a sole source of data management. It's cleaner from a data management perspective. Um, and this up to last year was a service that BOSIS provided. And they provide this service to, I don't know, probably fourteen to fifteen school districts. We actually We actually hosted the Power School User Meeting in Salamanca last month. So, you know, we are a leader in the use of Power School. We have a lot of this customization. Primarily due to the work of some of our building leaders. Kristen and PPS, a lot with Levi. But, you know, again, it's coming with a bit of a consequence is that if we want to be able to have all of these nice pieces. There's a certain piece of upkeep and maintenance that goes along with it.
For me, I think I'd rather have students who are achieving than ease of use for Karen or anyone else. I'd rather spend money on a couple guidance counselors, a social worker, tutors, things like that. Buying into this program, again, I don't understand why we would buy into such a limited program if we can't even customize. I don't understand why it's the biggest program in the world and we can't find somebody else to customize it for us. I don't understand why we have to pay them to do the territory boundary when we have Graham Hayes. Who is a GIS professional who could do that as well. I just don't understand this whole reasoning behind this. And that's why I'm against it. I just don't, I don't see the reasoning. I don't see creating another eighty thousand dollar position. When we have kids who can't even read, when we have kids that are still struggling with their core classes, you know, these types of things, so. The more we talk about this, I'm a hard no now.
What are other districts across the state doing as far as? You know. Trying to figure this out. If 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 this product is is not being supported by Erie One. Are there other Bosse's areas that are? That are continuing to roll out support for districts?
So like I said, most of them are simply purchasing other products. So, you know, that's, you know, if we don't do this and we want to have somebody who, if we want our students to be able to sign up electronically. We just purchase an athletic tractor and train everybody on how to do that. If we want to have students register online, we purchase another online product and we train everybody on how to do that. If we want to have our report cards be standards based, then we pay two hundred and fifty dollars an hour every time we want to make a change to the report card. So, you know. Then that's what every other district does. So when you go to another district, they'll have six or seven applications that they have that they purchased support. You know, just like all of the other ones that we do. And that's, I mean, I guess we we very easily can do that. Either way, we we have been paying for this service all along. We have the opportunity to bring somebody or create a position so that we can actually. Modify the database even more and make it easier for our students, our parents and our employees to utilize. And that's the real point here. We're not taking money away from any education piece. We're actually providing more time for our teachers. To be able to do what they do, which is teach. But again.
Now, we. We actually purchased this through a closer, correct, to Bosse's, Erie One Bosse's?
Correct.
How much of of that is is aidable? I would think all of it's aidable, correct?
Karen, did we come up with that answer?
No, we did not. I requested the info from CA Bosse's and was unable to get it. Amy didn't reply to me before the end of the day.
I would suspect that it is. Which would bring down the total cost of using in Erie One Programmer, even if we have to. Pay whatever, two hundred and fifty bucks an hour, you know, to create a special report that we have to pull. Might be more economically feasible than than hiring somebody full-time. Which we get no aid on.
Right. Totally agree with that. So I'm just gonna pull this off and assume this is a no, which is not a problem.
I just think it needs more study.
So.
And as we all know, I'm only one of seven, so.
Mark, before we transition off this, I I have a a couple, I guess, a question. The service will still be in effect for the remainder of the twenty one, twenty two school year, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And assuming that Bosse's drops this particular customization and we have to go a different route. Is, would there be an opportunity rather than purchase a whole service? To provide a consultative contract? With, and just to be clear, the Bob that Mark's talking about on the slide is not me, it's it's Bob Schiffman. Who's the programmer from Bosse's. Would there be an opportunity to purchase? A separate contract like we've done for other experts in the field, whether it's STEAM or. Native curriculum development, is is that something that's potentially a July one conversation? If Bosse's fully ends the program that we've become accustomed to?
Certainly. The key is to find someone who knows the system, right? And this was not hiring a, I didn't talk about Bob, a person, this is. Create a, you know, hire a programmer. That will allow us to customize and become more efficient and effective. And have a single database system. And then at the same time, be able to farm that person out to other districts and recoup the cost. If that's not, you know, I I'm perfectly fine going in whatever other direction. He may very well get hired by another district and then he's totally off the market and, you know, that's that. So if we're looking at a certain person. The key is, this is a fundamental shift from investing in a single database. Or do we then farm all of these pieces out to other software packages, which, whichever, that's. You know. Either way, the work is done.
Right, it's really the efficiency of the work. I mean, I I'm only gonna speak for myself and. I don't know everything about software, but I can tell you that I have been an integral part of many softwares at the nation and that. Sometimes when you can customize and you can get support for that customization. You know. You know, Carrie, you said, well, so so what if it cuts down on Karen's time, but boy, you know. I bet Karen feels a little bit differently on that because she's got so many different irons in the fire that. You know, you wanna make, you want a program that you can utilize and you can customize and you can get what you want. And I know that I appreciate that aspect. I also know that even with the customization of our software, there's people that we can go to that can help run the system and then there's also. That development piece where you have to go back to your programmers to to help with that code for the customization. And I'm always a big one, especially for technology to say, hey. Can you do this so that it makes my job ten times easier? Because why would I want to spend all this extra time running extra reports or doing things twice? If I can get something customized and it works better for me. And believe me, we use at least six different types of software at the nation. So, you know, I can appreciate where this is going. I I'm not saying we hire a. Particular individual, but before we rule this out, you know, let's stop and think about. Do we want Karen's time spent? Running multiple reports. So that she can come up with the data instead of. Investing money to be able to run one. I mean. I don't want to cut off my nose despite my face. And so when it comes to certain things with software and technology. I'm a big advocate for making sure we get what we want. You know, I I'm not, and I don't fully understand everything that Power School does. But, you know, boy, I would be. Upset if I said, hey, we're trying to customize our software to be able to get it to do this and somebody told me, you know what? Just go buy a couple other ones and and merge it together. You know, so. That that's my devil's advocate piece on that because. I can appreciate where this is going. I don't know, Karen, if you have anything to add or. Because you use it to get your reports and things and to me. You know, especially when we start talking about state impact aid and wanting to have accurate numbers. You know, we know what kind of money we get for state impact aid, so. I want to make sure that, you know, it's. I remember the first time Karen had to compile all the data for state impact aid and how long it took. So if we have a mechanism in place to help. You know, we're really, we really need to make sure we understand that fully. That's that's all I want to make sure I get across.
Yeah, I can add my two cents for sure. It, I mean, it literally saves me like two weeks' time. What what normally would take me two to two and a half weeks of just pulling data and proofing data and. Running it against the. State or the county GIS site, et cetera. I can run in a couple of days. So it's it's definitely a a time saver and, you know, if if Power School never made another change. Then we would be okay, but. They make changes all the time. It's just like when you're upgrading your iPhone, you're, you know, you update your software every couple of weeks. It's the same thing. They're they're constantly making improvements and when they make improvements, it changes, so you have to update these reports. It's the same thing on your iPhone. You have to update your apps. For every time that, you know, Apple makes a change. So it's it's really a huge time saver and. You know, and in my opinion, and and obviously I'm not a parent in using it, but I know that. If I were a parent, I would want to go to one place to do all this stuff versus. Well, which app do I have to go to to enroll my kid for sports and which one do I have to go to to? Sign up for lunch and which one do I need to go to for this, that, and the other thing? So I think just having one overarching, you know, piece such as Power School, I think it's a big advantage. And that's my two cents.
I would just echo Karen's comment, going back to the early days when we had E-School and we were trying to start the. Impact Aid Applications, we were quite literally going through record by record to verify kids. I would just strongly counsel. Everyone that when we start. Slicing off sections of the student management system. Inherently, we're going to lose data. We're we're the data systems are not going to speak to each other well. And the one thing that has dramatically changed under the Power School umbrella. And partially with the customization that we have done, we know we are different. And we need different data and we want different data. We will lose some of that efficiency. I don't want to go zombie apocalypse and say we'll never be able to get it. That would be disingenuous, but it does slow down. The ability that we can respond or the ability that we can get information from parents or to parents. Or get information from other districts when kids come to us and looking at those specialized and customized things. We have kind of made our mark being somewhat innovative. This is not unique for District A to create something that nobody else has. And then sell it. Both Kristen and I have experience in doing that with autistic programs in another district and. You know, as we become more proficient at it. Ideally, we want someone that's ours and on staff that's going to be here for years and years and years rather than a patch. When Bosse's is abandoning us with the customization. A little, I'm a little frustrated by that, but that's not uncommon. When the service levels of other districts drop. Then Bosse's will either jack prices up, which they're not doing, or end programs. That's relatively common, but what we don't want and what we shouldn't settle for. Is like what we had with E-School or Clear Track that wasn't meeting our needs. The program will change, the program will evolve. We should try to be ahead of the game. And the last thing I'll say is. The programmer is very much like in a car dealership. You want the salesman selling you the car and getting. And in in being able to have access to the kind of car you want to buy, they're not the guy fixing it when it breaks down. This is what we're talking about. Sue's great with the teachers and even Marcy is great with managing the. Technology Department. Neither are programmers. We want a programmer, we need a programmer, and we also need that programmer to help us train. To have someone that can be there for the long duration. But we just don't have anybody on staff to be able to do the articulated programming that we're really talking about to customize. And I'm not the expert in Power School. Mark and Karen use it significantly more. Kristen uses it. All day long, but you know, my two senses, we really should avoid. Slicing off and having multiple programs. We did that ten years ago and the data was a mess. That's just my two cents.
All right, I like your.
I don't think anybody's asking to slice off, you know. You know, sections of Power School. I think. What I heard Carrie say is, why can't we utilize? Personnel that we have on staff already. To. To generate the reports that we need. I know we've we've sent for several folks folks to different trainings on Power School to learn. You know, those those things.
Yes, and and I would agree, Dell, that's that's kind of what we want. But those staff members have attended one or two or three trainings. This is someone that is, you know, the consummate, you know, whether it's this person or someone, it's a consummate person that just does programming. If we, if if we look at all of the other duties and responsibilities that other people have, whether it's. Sue or Marcy or or Levi or hell even heck even secretaries. That are using Power School and trying to, you know, get customized reports. I I think. And would defer to Mark to talk about the difference that the programmer is doing. As opposed to the end user who's taking that predetermined report. And then using it for instructional purposes, because I really think that's what we're. That's what we're kind of talking about.
Well, let me let me jump in here because I'll tell you what I'm talking about is. Why would we buy into a program that we're so limited in how we update it? This is a worldwide program, as Marcus said. Why can't we get tech support from anywhere else in the world? Why do we have to get this one specific guy, Bob, whatever his name was? And hire him on our district? So that's that's what I was talking about. If this program is so worldwide, is so robust, is used by so many other districts. What are they gonna do about their support? There's gotta be support out there. You don't buy into a program and then never have any support. And I was saying, Bob, I loved your analogy about the mechanic in the car. I'm glad that we all understand that when we buy a car, we're buying the mechanic too. Right? That's basically what you said. So we buy a car, we're buying the mechanic. I love that analogy. I just don't agree with this program. I don't, I mean, I understand what it does. I don't agree that we're locked into this one resolution. I, Bob, you mentioned hiring somebody and having them for years and years and years. While in the Personnel Committee meeting. Mark mentioned that this guy is just looking for end of career. He said he's only got three or four or five more years and then he's retiring. So that's not years and years and years. So there's a difference there.
Right.
Well, I thought.
I actually like Power School. I'm sorry. Delay again.
Did you say you?
Turned satellite internet. I do. I I use it daily myself and and I've built customized reports, you know, it's it's really. Not that difficult, once once you know what you're doing. But it does take take time and training and 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 understanding, you know, what kind of data you need. That's why it's, you know. I think it's something that's doable. You have to recognize what what reports you want to pull off and then. And then program, you know, what you need yourself. You know, it's. And have we checked with any other Bosse's to see if 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 it's a service that they're offering? Maybe we have to enter into some kind of cooperative service with Orleans Bosse's or. Or Capital Region Bosse's, you know. Have we looked into that?
I have not looked beyond. The difference here is that we have him onsite. He does training with our people. And that's what we're looking for. And again, I don't, I feel like I really not communicated this well, because this isn't just writing a report. This is literally writing software. That is completely unique. There, you know, there is no other district. Um, that has the enrollment process that we do as fast as streamlined. Because it was totally customized and written for us. Um, it requires some maintenance and upkeep. But, you know, as Kristen said, it has streamlined the process for our parents and for our. Registration clerks and, and, you know, simplify their time. Sure, we could hire another clerk, um, and add in overtime for them to process the old way. Whi- which is what other districts do. We, I, I, not anyone. You're right, Dale. It takes some training to run reports. We're not talking about reports. We're talking about customized tables. That allow us to come up with our own process, let's say for discipline. Instead of having forms, we complete an online field in Power School linked to that student. It can transition and track all the way through. It's not an add-in module. It's customized for our discipline scenarios. The teacher see what's going on. That isn't anywhere else. We could probably purchase some other add-on service, but then again, we're buying another service. We're paying the maintenance on that. All of those, you know, have a total cost of ownership. Um, that, you know, as well as the training for the, the personnel. So, you know, I. I guess one of the things I would like to do, because I feel like we're taking way too much time on this. Um, is, you know, if we want to table this and we can, I'm happy to answer other questions. And maybe I'm not the person to present this. Um, I have pretty much zero interface with the customization piece. So maybe this is having Levi, Kristen, principals, all those people who do this. Um, come forward to talk about it. And again, this, the point of this is to have our personnel be trained by this person who is the trainer who. And again, if it's the Bob Schiffman, that's great. If it's somebody else, I, whatever. We have a need for this or this stuff all goes away and we have to add in extra services. It's one of those two options really. And yes, we would like to build the capacity of our own staff. But this is pretty specific niche. And while we send people to Power School University, it's on, you know, utilizing the data, utilizing different components of it. How to train. There's a learning management solution piece. There's the behind the scenes school setup. You know, every clock, every tick of every minute is tracked and reported to New York State through Power School. There's a whole scheduling component that starts with all the student schedules are built in Power School. That's a massive component that people get customized and trained in. That's not computer programming. So I'm going to just recommend we can table this, you know, as long as we want until people are comfortable or. We just decide we're going to go in a different direction. But I, I, I don't want to fatigue this out for, for too long, because I think there's a bunch of stuff. I'm only number, this is only number one. And we haven't even gotten to the rest of everybody.
All right, well, if we can transition Teresa and the board members, if that's okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I really would like to have more of a discussion about this in another time because. Well, I really, I don't want to see us lose customization and. And again, uh, if somebody took all the customization away from, from me, uh, I would be heartbroken. You know, I, I can appreciate what it does and, and, and believe me, when I ask for customization. You know, we want specific things, so I, I really appreciate what this program probably is doing. And I understand. Again, that it's, I don't care if it's the person, I just don't want us to lose the customization. And at the end of the day, I don't want to see us just spending, you know. Spending a, a dime or a, uh, to save a nickel. I, I think is what the old adage was, just because, you know, we didn't take advantage of something that we could have and, uh. In one way or another, we're going to pay for it. So we just have to figure out if we want to employ the person. Or if we want to go out and hire a consultant to come in, because, you know, if we want to keep the customization, which to me is the. The greater piece of this, then we have to do it one way or another. So that's, that's all I, I want to say on that. So, Mark, why don't you go to number two?
Okay, number two is me. Wait, Mark, did you have another one that I wasn't aware of?
Well, remember we were going to talk about the land acknowledgement statement?
Oh, yes.
Hopefully that's quick.
Yes.
Okay, so. Um, with this being, um, let me just bring this up. Um, with this being Native American Heritage Month. Um, we have talked a little bit about a land acknowledgement statement. We had one. It was sort of, I don't know if it was in final form, draft form, um, that was read at the Betts Park opening. Um, either way, our Native American curriculum team and our, um, Seneca Studies. Teachers got together, they took some of the components of the existing land acknowledgement statement. They utilized the governance, um, the guidance here, the native governance centers, land acknowledgement guide and the beyond, the land acknowledgement guide as guidance. And I asked them just to provide a little bit of a summary as far as how and why. Um, what a land acknowledgement statement is for those folks who may not be as up to speed on it and what some of the components are that are in it. So what they returned back to me, I'm just going to quickly read. The purpose of a land acknowledgement is for an organization, district or an educational institution to formally acknowledge and reflect on the history of the land. As well as the genocide, forced assimilation, ethnic cleansing approached upon and or stolen lands and the forced removal of indigenous peoples. Land acknowledgement statements acknowledge the indigenous peoples of the land being occupied and whom the land belongs to. That hold a unique connection to the land associated with traditional knowledge, languages, cultural practices and oral traditions. Build over many generations and pass down to future generations. In many cases, the land being acknowledged no longer is in possession of the indigenous peoples. And is used as a first step in initiating the reconciliation and living celebration of the resilience of indigenous peoples. When developing a land acknowledgement, we used both the native governance centers land acknowledgement guide and beyond land acknowledgement guide. As well as individuals' research and knowledge bases built over time and with a focus on the land that Salamaka City School District stands on. There are many parts to a land acknowledgement. First, knowing and including the indigenous peoples to whom the land belongs to. Next involves including a brief and accurate history of the land and related treaties. Because Salamaka Schools is an educational institution, it was also important to include the forced assimilation of Seneca people. And recognize the trauma that continues to impact the community and traditional educational practices among the Seneca today. Lastly, the acknowledgement includes an authentic appreciation for the cultural diversity within the community. And the inclusion of other members of the Hodi Nochoni Confederacy that attend Salamaka School District. The land acknowledgement that we're going to talk about tonight. Um, was developed by members of the Native American curriculum team, including Jerry Musial and Gabriel Papa. Family School Liaison Brittany Jimmerson and was reviewed by members of the Indigenous Studies Committee. An accurate and appropriate land acknowledgement statement on behalf of the district works toward building an authentic relationship with the Seneca Nation of Indians. To whom the land the school district stands upon today. The work the district is going, doing goes beyond the very basic and fundamental steps towards reconciliation and ultimately the empowerment. Of indigenous peoples and is something to be celebrated. So what, um, I'm going to do is. Um, I'll read it just so that I can, you know, we can, because I don't know if you can see, um, the screen as well as. Let's see. Here it is right here. I do want to just sort of give a little bit of a rundown, um, while we're, while this is on the screen. There, there are several different versions that the Native American curriculum team is recommending. One is a more formal and thorough land acknowledgement. That is endorsed by the school board and becomes really the land acknowledgement of the school district. This is then going to be taken and parsed down into grade or age appropriate. Land acknowledgement statements that will be read at each one of the buildings. Um, it makes sense with this being Native American Heritage Month that this would be something and the team has asked that this be read at the next board meeting. And is perhaps even read at every single board meeting. Given that we state the pledge of allegiance at all of our, um, board meetings, it would make sense to then recognize the land. Um, that we are standing upon and that the district is upon, which is, um, belonging to the Seneca Nation of Indians. So the statement itself is about four minutes long. Um, but again, remember that, that can be modified and brought down for other particular settings. Um, so the Seneca or the Salamaka City Central School District acknowledges. Um, the homeland of the Ananda Watka. The people of the Great Hill, the Seneca people, who are keepers of the Western door for the Hodi Nochoni Confederacy. And whose ancestral and modern day land and water Salamaka School District now stands. This truth is told by the words spoken by the George Washington Belt and the two row, two row wampum. And codified by the seventeen ninety-four Cannon Daigwa Treaty. The seventeen ninety-four treaty was signed by Tom Timothy Pickering as a representative for George Washington. And ratified by the U.S. Senate as the supreme law of the land. We are mindful of our geographic proximity to Thomas Indian School, a boarding school for Native American children. Operated on the Cataragus Reservation of the Seneca Nation in Irving, New York from eighteen fifty-seven to nineteen fifty-seven. We also acknowledge that Seneca children were also removed from their homes. And sent to Tooney Sasa Indian Boarding School in Quaker, New York. And Carlisle Indians Industrial School in Carlisle, Pennsylvania, which were boarding schools off territory. These boarding schools implemented the federal Indian policy of forced assimilation. Which included the prohibition and punishment for using Seneca language and for Seneca cultural expression. We recognize this century-long trauma and cultural genocide continues. To reverberate within the Seneca and other Hodi Nochoni communities. We send love and acknowledgement to the survivors that reside in our community today. We acknowledge that one-third of this territory was flooded by the construction of Kinzu Dam despite and in opposition to the seventeen ninety-four Cannon Daigwa Treaty. We recognize this forcibly remove Seneca families from their homes and push them into Salamaka City Central School District. We offer care and support for their children and grandchildren. We acknowledge we are standing on the Seneca territory of Ohio in an area called Onaidago, meaning place of the hemlocks. Further, we acknowledge that the city and school district exists through the goodwill of the Seneca Nation of Indians and was reaffirmed by the U.S. Congressional Acts of February nineteen. Eighteen seventy-five and September thirtieth, eighteen ninety, that authorized the Seneca Nation of New York Indians to lease lands within the Cataragus and Allegheny Reservations. Salamaka City School District endorses the United Nations Declaration of the Rights of Indigenous Peoples and strive to surpass each of the articles. We wish to strongly state our commitment to teaching the history, culture and language of the Ananda Watka. And beyond, in a framework that acknowledges settlers colonialism and its consequences. To educating all of our students to understand the foundational nature and ongoing existence of settler colonialism. As a social, political formation and system of thought. Mindful of these histories, we work toward understanding, acknowledgement and ultimately reconciliation. The Salamaka City Central School District acknowledges and greatly values the diverse community members from indigenous nations. Their spiritual and physical relationship to this environment, their rights, their resilience, their sovereignty and their heritage. We also acknowledge other members of the Hodi Nochoni Confederacy, including the Tuscarora, Oneida, Kuyuga, Anandaga and Mohawk. That have a connection and presence here. We stand with all indigenous peoples and their staunch resolve to remain connected to this land. While we cannot undo what has been done, it is the goal of the Salamaka City Central School District. To make improvements that will benefit the next seven generations of indigenous students. So, um, as I said, that is a collaborative effort between many of our educators, um, and consultants in the district. Um, they are presenting this essentially to the school board, um, and would look, I anticipate for adoption as the. District's land acknowledgement statement.
I'll jump in first, Mark. Way to redeem yourself. I'm serious. That's not a joke. One thing I would suggest is that you send this over to tribal council for their review and their acknowledgement and quite frankly, their blessing. This is, this is a very important issue and it needs to be reviewed by Seneca people before. I mean, the Seneca government before this goes in a, um, action. Personally, I think some of the things could be changed in there referencing Seneca people instead of Seneca Nation of Indians. The land belongs to the people. Seneca Nation of Indians is the. Uh, white man government corporation that they assigned us. It's not who we are. Seneca people is probably more accurate. That's just my thoughts, but I would recommend this go over to tribal council and, uh, wait for the blessing. But I appreciate this. This is quite frankly honest. I mean, awesome. It's, it's pretty good.
I agree with Carrie, you know, it really does need the, the blessing of council and. And the executives and, uh, you know, it should be read at the board meetings. I mean, is my. My thought, I, I think it's important and, uh, you know, we do reside on the reservation and. Uh, we need to make sure that everybody understands it and respects it. So that's, that's my two cents.
Very good. So I will, um, have the, uh, the teacher, the, the group and, you know. We agreed and decided that this was something that needed to get done. I can't take much credit of any for all of the work. There was an awful lot of work that went into this. But, um, I will have those individuals present that, um, or figure out the process to get that appropriately presented to, um. The Seneca Nation and the council and, uh, make sure that, that we can get moving forward with that.
Just as a side note, uh, we do have a meeting. I think it's next week, the sixteenth. I think that's. Uh, I'm not even sure. I think it's next Thursday with President Pagels. Uh, so you know, that Mark, that might be a good thing that we can put on that agenda. Um, for that joint Salamaka School District, uh, Seneca Nation and city, uh, government. I, I, I would personally like to acknowledge the, the work of probably dozens of people and, and students and, and staff members. Who contributed to this and, and I would hope that rather than us. Read this at board meetings that we could do like we had done and utilize our students. To, to send this powerful message. Uh, adults reading it is, is really a tremendous progress point for the district. But I think anytime we put students as the voice of our district. Um, it tells people that we are serious and that we mean business. Um, I, I'm awfully proud, awfully proud of the staff that, uh, worked together to put this. And I. I'm thinking, you know, reflectively back eleven years ago, that this wouldn't have happened. And it really shows the relationship that we forged both with the Seneca Nation. With our staff and the Seneca people. And Carrie, I think your comments are really spot on about Seneca Nation of Indians and I recall a conversation. Not too long ago before, uh, Matt Pagels became president up at, uh, the administrative building. Where the conversation was, we really don't want to refer us, the district. Referring to the Seneca as the Seneca Nation of Indians and we kind of dropped that vernacular. Um, in almost every instance, this is something that the district and our community can be proud of and. Um, I, I think this is a really a job well done.
Yeah, I agree. Um, I wanted to share something with you guys since you brought this up. A good friend of mine, Don Colburn, her grandmother passed. Um, just this past week, she shared a story on Facebook and it kind of. Uh, drives home a little bit about what we're talking about and I was going to share this with you guys. Some of you may have seen it, some of you may not, but I'm just going to read the first paragraph. She says, well, her grandmother, Virginia Strauss, or she passed, um, distant relative of mine, coincidentally, um. I want to share a story. When the Kinzu Dam was coming through our community in the nineteen fifties and sixties, it brought immense trauma. The stories of everybody's home being burned to the ground. My mom came home. From school one day and her home was gone. Others hurried to grab what they could from their home and stood and watched them be burned down. The smoke cloud that covered the sky and the smell of death as our ancestors' bodies were dug up from the cemeteries to be moved. My Aunt Myra talked about having to identify her father and sister's remains. She knew her father because she recognized his belt buckle. And when they opened her sister's casket, her dress disintegrated when the air hit it. My mom spoke of the smell in the air during that time. Which reminds me of the smell described on nine eleven in New York City. As a young child, they made them put their heads down on their desk and not talk about it. As a young child, they made them put their heads down on their desk and not talk about it. They had to pretend nothing was happening. I see her in the film Land of Our Ancestors in kindergarten, standing with her hand on her heart, saying the Pledge of Allegiance to a country that was doing this to our community. This was in Salamaka City Central School less than sixty years ago. This isn't something that happened a long time ago, and my family has carried this trauma for years since. That's the first paragraph of which girl. It goes on to more personal about her family and other things, but it's so poignant. What are we talking about, this type of stuff?
Thank you for sharing that, Carrie.
That's a night. I wanted to echo a lot of the sentiments that were saying, said by Carrie and Teresa. I'm glad that this will be going forward to the Seneca Nation for their review as well. And, you know, I hope that this brings forward more conversation and even those uncomfortable conversations. And, you know, my father, he won't read this until I read it to him. He doesn't get online or anything, but uh he'll be, he'll be touched by by this land acknowledgement because he's a, he's a man that made it through that whole Kinzuwa removal part and he went away to the army. And when he came home, he didn't know where his home was. Um, it was burned. So this is going to spark a whole lot of conversations, some good, some overdue, some not so good, but I think this is a step in the direction that uh it's gonna help, help repair some people. Thank you.
Okay, wow. It, Mark, it's gonna be tough for me to top that with my two things that are seemingly completely inconsequential at this point in time. Um, the the first one is just to to confirm with the board members that our discussions with the city of Salamaka and the library board have officially ended. Uh, the library board has informed us that they do not want to partner with the school district, give up um control or authority of uh anything, not that we were really looking for control or authority. Um, but I just wanted the the board to officially know that uh the library board is um um, somewhat graciously said, thank you, but no thanks. So it doesn't mean that there can't be future conversations. So the library board in the city um can, you know, continue to do the work that they've done for the community and will be here ready, willing, and able to assist if a later date uh does come. So I just wanted to officially kind of bring closure to that. I do want to know that Karen just sent a message that she has to um um uh bow out, so I appreciate that. And I'll follow up with Karen and thank her. The last piece, which is kind of interesting uh, and Carrie, I think you'll appreciate this. Um, so we received a call uh, late yesterday. I did uh probably around ten o'clock at night at home uh, from um Section Six. And they, long story short, they have the New York State Cross Country Championships and their carrier um contractor for coach buses uh, has bailed on them. And they have also bailed on the New York State Girls Swim Sectionals in Ithaca next week uh, in uh, at uh the Cornell Ithaca Campus. So they're asking us, uh, and I did agree because we do have a policy um, about renting out our vehicles. So um, assuming that we can get bus drivers, uh, the section has asked and will be sending a formal document asking to rent our coach buses. So zipping down uh probably Route twenty-eight to Binghamton on Friday and then returning on Saturday will be our two coach buses with students from every other district in Western New York. So um, I did take the liberty of of uh asking Bob Bench to make sure that we could post that and actually have drivers to do that um Friday morning and then returning Saturday. It doesn't conflict with any scheduled athletic or recreational activity that we have scheduled. So I just wanted to kind of let you know that um Salamaka is bailing out Section Six. Um, I did make a notation, I won't uh acknowledge it uh on the board meeting about what happens after this with our expectations for the section. Um, but I can fill you in on those private conversations, but I did just want to alert you to that in case you're driving down uh over to Binghamton or Ithaca next weekend and you see our buses uh transporting other kids.
They'll be so jealous.
That's like drop, mic drop moment, so. Yeah, and and I do think that part of that is, you know, we talk about often about being good neighbors to people. Um, we've had other requests for other uh athletic teams to use their fields as their fields were flooded and unplayable. I think every time we extend our district out a little bit more, I think we represent our district, our our students, our staff, our community uh, with exceptionally uh high standards. Uh, I think people do take notice of that. So uh, that brought great joy to me last night. Okay, um, we do have one other issue to talk about and we can excuse Mark and Kristen. And and then I'll turn it over to Teresa unless there's something else for the board members while Kristen and Mark are still here.
I'm good.
Okay, Mark and Kristen, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.